Call this meeting to order. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, on the question, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for public to adjust the board's agenda items only. No one? Okay. Penn State Extension 2023 update. Here to speak about that is Steve Alzey.
Good morning. We have our crew with us today. I'm Sandy Graham. I am the 4-H educator. So we concentrate on youth development as part of Penn State Extension. And our clubs, we have what we would call traditional 4-H clubs. And we serve about 100 members who are participating in that capacity, which is up about 50% in the last few years. We also have some school and community programs where last year we have served over 700 students. Our members participate not only in the county, but we have opportunities throughout the state. So what we like to do as our office is offer them a 50% scholarship for them to participate. We want to make sure that we don't want any children not to participate because of financial reasons. So basically, what our kids have been participating is our regional overnight camp. So we had nine youth go to Camp Levine in Benton, PA, and spend four nights. Great learning, great to deal with bugs, great to deal with homesickness, as well as have your normal camp fun. We have members who participate in the state fashion review, which is for our teenagers who are completing sewing and design projects at a higher level. We just finished up our state horse show where we had four members participate in Harrisburg. And one of our big events throughout the state is state leadership conference. And that's a weekend conference for teens who are 13 to 18 years old. And they really get an intense weekend of how to develop their leadership skills.
You do a great job. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having us today. My name is Christina Pullman, and I'm an educator at Penn State's Lackawanna County Extension Office. And I provide programming within our Food Families and Communities unit. So I would just like to share with you some of our program highlights and encourage you to reach out if you're interested in learning more or participating. Over the past two years, we have delivered financial literacy programs to over 1,000 participants statewide with our financial classes. Those are aimed at helping individuals develop the skills they need to manage, save, and safeguard their money. Participants of the program learn to set money goals and develop a budget using Penn State's Build a Budget book. And as part of financial wellness, we offer a series of classes that helps individuals make smart financial decisions that positively impact their financial future. Skills learned in that one include organizing financial clutter, evaluating money relationships, and making healthy food choices on a budget. Health insurance literacy is our new initiative that we are rolling out this month just in time for the open enrollment period for health insurance coverage. The program's called Smart Choice, Smart Use, and it's aimed at simplifying health insurance so individuals understand how to choose the right insurance plan and make informed healthcare decisions for themselves and their families. All of the financial and health literacy programs are offered in the community as in-person or virtual workshops. We also offer mental health first aid training for adults working with youth, including social workers, teachers, first responders, or any caring individual. Mental health first aid is an essential skill that helps community members learn to identify and respond to signs of youth experiencing a mental health challenge. Look for these trainings being scheduled in the community. Organizations in Lackawanna County can reach out to schedule private group trainings. Lastly, we have a parent education program called Thrive. This program provides parents and caregivers with tools and strategies to help them through every child developmental stage from birth to age 18. And it equips them with skills to strengthen their parenting practices, manage stress, and promote a healthy lifestyle for their children. Thrive is a free program that is being delivered in the community through a hybrid approach where parents complete online learning modules and meet for weekly discussions with a trained educator through an in-person or virtual format. All of these programs can be explored more at our website, extension.psu.edu, or by contacting me at the Lackawanna County Extension Office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Tombasco, and I am the Master Watershed Steward Coordinator for Lackawanna County. Master Watershed Stewards are made up of volunteers who give their time because they share a love of the environment and because they care about clean water in particular. So we provide services to the community in quite a few ways, depending on what people's strengths are and what they like to do. I'm a retired teacher, so I grab anything where I get to work with kids. I'm really happy whether they put us in the classroom or whether it might be at a summer camp or at a public event. A lot of people would be really scared to do that. We do have a lot of other things that they can do. We cooperate also with Dickinson College to do some stream monitoring to make sure that, I believe, six local streams are still healthy. That happens on a monthly basis. We do stream cleanups. People may plant trees or maintain riparian buffers. Okay? Our most successful program for the past year or so, I would say, is our rain barrel program. We do demonstrations showing how to install and use rain barrels. Sometimes we can actually give people the rain barrel kit. Sometimes it's just a demonstration. Sometimes we're also lucky enough to be able to actually give them the kit that they need to install their rain barrel. We're always looking for volunteers. So if anybody is interested in becoming a Master Watershed Steward, I ask you to just call your local extension. We provide training. It is a really good program. Thank you very much for letting me speak this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jill Bear, and I am the Master Gardener Coordinator for Lackawanna County. And the Master Gardener program is similar to the Master Watershed Steward program. It's a volunteer program. So people from our community go through extensive horticultural training. And then we do all kinds of things from, we have a garden hotline. We do, we work with people of all ages. And here in Lackawanna County, our program is very community partner-based. And so today, I just wanted to highlight some of the new partnerships that we've grown in the past year or two and that we look forward to continuing into, you know, 2024 and beyond. And this is really just the tip of the iceberg, right? So we have lots of longstanding community partnerships that we work with, too. So this year, we partnered with the Keystone 10 Million Trees Project and helped distribute over 1,800 native trees and shrubs. And that looked like master gardeners helping the public choose plants that would be appropriate for their property and then also giving planting information, too, to hopefully have success once those plants went home. We have partnered with the Recovery Bank and have had a ton of fun. They have helped us for two years now with the landscape in front of the Gateway Building. And we're about to do window decorations with Greens together with them. That's been a fun endeavor. We tend to do a little bit more with them every year. We started also this year programming with the Gino Merly Center. So we had master gardeners that went weekly and maintained food vegetable plants. And we're already looking forward to expanding and having more wheelchair-accessible beds for next year. Other partnerships, the Scranton School for Deaf and Hard-of- hearing Children. We have master gardeners that do monthly programming with kids there. And we have a blast doing it. And we do, just a little side note, master gardeners do a lot of spotted lantern fly education in general. So we are doing that when we're tabling, at outreach events. We are, in general, a resource for everyone in the county on spotted lantern fly. We had a lot of fun with the School for the Deaf doing spotted lantern fly. Other community partners that we've developed over this past year and the Abington Community Garden. So our master gardener group participates in statewide vegetable trials. So we are working with Penn State master gardeners across the state, monitoring, you know, growing, assessing, and monitoring pepper plants. And that's something we did at the Abington Community Garden. And we, this next year, they're giving us an extra plot. We have grown vegetables in extra space, too, to donate to Food Pantry. If any of you, if you have never been to the North Pocono Library Garden project, so I highly recommend, it's worth a visit. So master gardeners are part of the team there that maintains a demonstration and giving garden behind the library. They've been a longtime partner of ours. Also this year, we have done some events with United Neighborhood Centers. You know, it's been a really fun year. We look forward to doing more with them in this upcoming year. And one thing of note, too, this spring, 2024, we will be having our first, hopefully, annual native plant sale. So we want to offer things that are hard to find in our county but would be appropriate for people to plant in their yards. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I just have a couple of things before we, to wrap up here. First of all, thank you for our educators and staff here for being able to join us. And also, thank you to the commissioners in the county, you know, for their continued support of Penn State Extension and for giving us an opportunity today to kind of share what's been happening this year with the public. So we do appreciate that. So kind of some information that I want to share is we've been doing a lot of, you know, in-person activities here, but we also do a lot of webinars and information. Kind of started because of COVID, but, you know, we've been, this year, I feel is like our first pre-pandemic year where we've been back kind of being more out in the community and doing more events in the public, which is good. But that doesn't mean we haven't stopped, you know, with people that have wanted to do online webinars or courses and things like that. So our website receives, received over 20,000 hits so far this year from Lackawanna County residents. So that's individual, you know, users, not just, you know, one hit. They could click through our website about 10 times, you know, looking for materials and things like that. They've registered for almost 200 webinars, about 400 people. And we've also had almost 600 people that have done in-person courses and workshops with us. Some of the topics that people are interested in from Penn State Extension is learning more about mental health, large-scale solar projects, particularly related to, you know, utility-scale solar projects in the county, and also home horticulture through our master gardener programs. Our educators have contacted over 1,000 people in the county with regards to, you know, general questions that come into our, you know, garden hotline, but also going out into the community and answering questions and doing presentations for different organizations. And our in-person workshops focused this year on a couple of topics. Some of them were nutrition, healthy cooking, and also our commercial tree school for commercial growers in the county, so our orchards. Our three main volunteer programs that we have here in Lackawanna County are the Master Gardeners, the Watershed Stewards, and 4-H. And those groups give back almost 4,000 hours' worth of volunteer time to county residents. And they do that through a variety of things, whether it's, you know, interacting directly with our youth through the 4-H program or going out into the community with the master gardeners and watersheds and working on those community gardens and community projects. But also just general, you know, information and questions that, you know, the residents might have about, you know, home horticulture and anything. So that's kind of puts a bell on our updates for this year. Again, we really thank, you know, for our time today and thank the commissioners in the county for their support. I have some folders for you, too, of course, because it's not extension without handing out some packets that kind of give a wrap-up for the year as well. So thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. What's your, like, Rick, you want to?
Thank you.
Are we going to do the picture?
Yeah, we might as well while you're here, and you have everybody with you.
Thank you.
You got all these. Oh, these nice young ladies. We might as well. Picture taken. It's a great program.
Downward angle.
Stand here.
Yep. Thank you.
One person is. One person is.
Did you see that? But I don't see the camera. Oh, there. Downward angle.
Okay, everybody look at me. A couple.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You bet, Joe. Thank you.
I'd really like to thank the Penn State Extension, everyone that participates in it. It's a great program. There are a lot of great programs that they do, and it's good for the county. Proclamation presentation, 230280.
Whereas for over 100 years, the United Way of Lackawanna and Wayne Counties have brought people together to focus on the most important needs in the community to create a positive impact. And whereas, the theme for the 2023 United Way campaign is "Make It Happen." As we join in fighting for the education, financial stability, and health of everyone in Lackawanna and Wayne Counties, and whereas, the mission of the United Way is to improve the quality of life for the people in Lackawanna and Wayne Counties by serving as a catalyst for the community problem-solving and conducting and efficient, encompassing volunteer fundraising, effort to positively impact the community's most compelling social problems. And whereas, our United Way advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for all. Its focus is on education, income, and health, the essential building blocks for a good quality of life. Community support is needed more than ever to live united through the United Way. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notterianni, Debbie Dominic, Chris Schirmack, commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and recognize November 2023 as United Way Month in Lackawanna County. So please support this great cause. We're going to do pictures, too.
Yeah, Warren and Gary, you want to say a little something about it? I think this is the first administration that has actually met its goal for United Way for the county government in many, many years.
Well, first of all, I am the, I'm Warren Acker. I'm the co-chairman of the 2024 campaign. And I just, I'm really here to introduce this young man. But first, I want to thank the commissioners very much for your support, also all the county employees in the county. It matters. Everything that's raised for the United Way goes to help those people in need in our county. So it really is, it's a great effort. And personally, as part of the campaign, I want to thank the three of you very much. Now, Gary?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to what Warren said and thank you all for your support. This is, you know, somebody from Penn State mentioned about coming off the pandemic. And I think I said this last year when I was here. I don't think people realize that coming off the pandemic is going to be a very long process, especially with the businesses closed and whatnot. And we're seeing that in the nonprofit world, the social service world, where there are still many, many people out there who are in need, who are coming towards, to us for help, especially seniors. We're blessed right now. We're working with hundreds of seniors, I think, every week through our PA Medi program where we're doing some Medicare counseling with seniors. Right after the first of the year, we'll start our VITA free tax program where we do free income taxes for anywhere from 2,000 to 2,300 individuals throughout the county. And that's on top of the Gift of Warmth Program, which provides heating services for individuals as we move forward. But, so I mean, and everybody knows, I think, what the services provide, but what they don't know are the support we receive underneath. And I really wanted, you know, I asked Warren if I could just have a couple of minutes up here. This is giving me the opportunity to really thank the three of you. I have stood at this podium, this is my 38th campaign. I've stood at this podium, and I've stood at, I think, down on Adams Avenue more times than I could count. And I can honestly say, without a shadow of a doubt, this administration has been the most supportive, and not only from a financial standpoint, but from a collaboration standpoint. In my business, we talk about collaboration. We talk about partnerships so much that sometimes it gets watered down. But the collaboration and partnerships that we've had with county government over the past number of years has just been unbelievable. And we have been the envy of other communities throughout the Commonwealth who are calling me on the phone saying, "How are you doing this with your local area agency on aging?" Or "How are you doing this with your local county commissioners?" Especially during the pandemic and especially during the vaccines. So I just wanted to really thank the three of you for the support that you've given us over these many years from the bottom of my heart. Not only have we, from a United Way, made friends, but I feel like I have personal friends with all of you, so thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Sarah McDonald and Joe Durenzo, who for many years have served as the point people for the county for the campaign. So again, thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Campaign has started, just so everyone knows. Campaign has started. And again, as I said, this last year was probably, the last few years were the first time in a long time that the county has reached its goal. And part of that was Sarah's predecessor, Jason Cavul, which is now the Secretary of Aging for Pennsylvania. Jason was a big part of that.
He's also on our board.
The old man sits in the chair. Who wants to hold the, I think Sarah.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Good stuff. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, bud. United Way is an important program. We want to thank them for all their great work for Lackawanna County.
They don't have to. Neither them or Penn State have to stick around for the rest of this meeting.
No, not at all. If they want to stay, they're welcome to. If they don't, they can certainly. Okay. Moving on, ordinance, second reading, 230278.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the second reading of ordinance 286. At the conclusion of the reading, there will be a vote on it. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue its general obligation note series of 2023 in the principal amount not to exceed $11,400,000. Whereas, it is necessary that the indebtedness of the county be increased for the purposes of providing funds for a project consisting of, one, funding the design, acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, and installation furnishing and equipping of improvements and/or additions to the county's facilities and properties, including, but not limited to, street paving improvements, bridge repairs and improvements, traffic control systems and equipment, flood mitigation projects, municipal building renovations and improvements, roof repairs and replacements, technology and information improvements, and equipment acquisition, energy savings projects, acquisition of municipal government equipment. Number two, additional capital projects of the county to the extent approved by the board. And number three, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the note. Whereas, the finance of the cost of the project, the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, the purchaser, has determined to make a loan to the county in the principal amount not to exceed $11,400,000. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the board, that the principal amount of the note of the county proposed to be issued will not exceed $11,400,000. The county hereby approves the project. The note is hereby declared to be in general obligation of the county. The purchaser is hereby designated as the paying agent, sinking fund depositor for the note. The proposal is hereby accepted, and the note in the principal amount not to exceed $11,400,000 herein authorized to be issued and sold is hereby awarded and sold to the purchaser. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the note shall be paid out of the proceeds derived from the issuance of the note. Proper officers of the county are hereby execute and deliver such other documents, certificates, instruments, and other instruments, and to take such other action as may be necessary to proper, to effect the completion of the financing or the intent and purposes of this ordinance. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that or ask any further questions from following up from 230280 is CFO, Mr. Dave Bolzoni, and our attorney for Stevens and Lee, Mr. Brian Kozlansky.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I will keep my comments brief since we've discussed this initiative at length for some time, both individually and collectively. Again, what I'll reiterate is that much thought has been put into this initiative. It will address a number of county infrastructure needs. We've approached this initiative responsibly, achieving balance between county needs and taxpayers' interest. Approval will be a step forward for the county.
Do you have any questions for Dave? Entertain a motion to approve? Second, on the question?
You know, my only concern is just, you know, how we plan a repayment on both of these ordinances and borrowings. So I'm a no, simply because of that.
I think Mr. Bolzoni's addressed those issues, and I feel very comfortable going forward. And a lot of these things are problems that have been kicked down the road for many, many years that need to be addressed. And it's a way that we can do it fiscally responsible, and I think Dave has done that. And I'm going to be a yes, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance, second reading, 230279.
Oh, all in favor?
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm a no.
Yay.
Aye.
Aye. What am I doing?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance, second reading, 230279.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 287. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17 million. Whereas, the board has determined to accept the proposal, PNC Capital Markets LLC, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the purchaser, for the purchase of the bonds. Now therefore being enacted and ordained pursuant to the provisions of the ordinance, the board hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17 million. The board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance, which will be evidenced by the bonds, shall be non-electoral debt of the county. Brief description of the project to be funded with the proceeds of the bond is as follows. Number one, the funding, design, acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, installation, furnishing, and equipping of improvements and/or additions to the county's facilities and properties, including, but not limited to, street paving and improvements, bridge repairs and improvements, traffic control systems and equipment, flood mitigation projects, municipal building renovations and improvements, roof repairs and replacements, technology and information improvements, and equipment acquisition, energy savings projects, and the acquisition of municipal equipment. Number two, additional capital projects of the county to the extent approved by the board. And number three, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds. The board shall and does hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the bonds in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. The proper officers of the county is hereby, are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dumont, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds shall be paid out of the proceeds derived from the issuance of the bonds. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and the sale of the bonds and the financing of the project. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that once again is the CFO, Mr. Bolzoni.
Mr. Bolzoni.
Any other questions for Mr. Attorney Kozlansky?
There really isn't anything else that I will add. What I will say is that there probably is quite a bit that I could say about this initiative, both personally and professionally. But what I will say to all three of you is that I stand squarely behind this initiative. I think it's important for the county.
Thank you. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question?
Just, again, it's just, my question is repayment. I understand that there's a lot of issues, a lot of things that have been neglected for a long, long time. And, you know, there's some critical things that...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, Chris?
No.
Thank you, Dave.
Resolution, 230288.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 363983-3646, inclusive totaling $1,101,930.89. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,455,183.72. Adopted and registered by Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution, 230281.
Entering into an agricultural conservation easements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into separate agreements acting through its county agricultural land preservation board for the sale and purchase of agricultural conservation easements for 40.26 acre state-funded agricultural conservation easement on the Thomas J. Junior and Anna M. Nichols Number One Farm, Greenfield Township, Lackawanna County. Item two, 28.8 acres, county-funded agricultural conservation easement on the Charles D. and Brenda J. Miller Number One Farm in Newton Township, Lackawanna County. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Chairman, here to speak upon this, the Farmland Preservation Program Administrator, Mr. Eric Johnson.
Eric.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. Like was said, we're looking for approval to purchase two easements, the Miller Farm, which is going to be using existing county program money that has been allocated to our program, and also the Nichols Farm, which is going to be using Commonwealth state funding to purchase that easement, also in Lackawanna County. Like was said, 28.8 acres on the Miller Farm in Newton Township. This will be actually our first easements preserved in Newton Township, which is exciting on behalf of our program, that we can create a stronghold of agricultural land that's going to be preserved in perpetuity there and open space in Lackawanna County to produce food and livestock and all of that kind of things here in Lackawanna County. Nichols in Greenfield Township builds upon a large existing block of easements that exists in Greenfield Township and adjacent to Scott Township. In that area, we've created a large block of preserved land that's going to preserve open space and agriculture, also in perpetuity. So I appreciate your involvement in this program, as always, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Eric?
Nope, it's a great program.
It is a great program. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. Resolution, 230282.
Entering into a Homeland Security Grant Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into the Department of Emergency Management Northeast Pennsylvania Counterterrorism Task Force for the fiscal year 23, U.S. Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $893,705 to commence September 1st, 2023 to December 29th, 2026. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Here to speak upon that is the Energy and Climate Director, Mr. Tom Steller.
Morning.
Morning.
This Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement, this is through the 10 counties Northeast Counterterrorism Task Force, which I am on the board, a voting member of. What this provides is equipment, resources, and supplies for the 10 counties to share. That way, everything, there's more resources out there for the counties that need it. This money also goes towards the SWAT teams and the urban search and rescue teams as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Tom?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Oh, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. What are the chances of getting a new bear cap for the SWAT team?
Resolution, 230283.
Entering into an agreement with the United States Department of the Interior. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an agreement for installation and maintenance with the United States Department of Interior for the United States Geological Survey Water Science Center for stream flow measuring and/or water quality sampling at the Phil Martin Street Bridge in Archibald, Pennsylvania. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here is the Director of Roads and Bridges, Mr. Larry LaCasse.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The U.S. Department of the Interior, the United States Geological Survey, has a river gauging station in Archibald now. It's a little bit upstream towards the German border on the Lackawanna River, and it's kind of an old stone building, but the equipment is kind of antiquated. So rather than upgrade that, they were looking to put a new, modern type of gauging system on our Phil Martin Street Bridge. So I met out there with them, and we inspected the equipment they want to put in, and it's relatively small. I talked to the engineers, and there's no problem mounting it to the bridge. The bridge is structurally sound. And then I sent the paperwork to Attorney Fredrickson, and he looked it over, and says everything seems to be in place. So we're hoping you guys will vote to let them put it on there and maybe get some updated equipment to help the people along the Lackawanna River as far as gauging the depths and flood stages and stuff.
Yeah, it's, modern technology has made things a lot different than it was as far as gauging the river, and it's important because of what happens with it. All right, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Resolution, 230284.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a memorandum of understanding with the nonprofit Employment Opportunity and Training Center of Northeast Pennsylvania Outreach Center for Community Resources for the annual Adopt an Angel Program to commence November 15th, 2023 and expire January 15th, 2024. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Health and Human Services Director, Mr. Bill Brown.
Morning, Commissioners. This is a program that we had administered for Christmas for, for probably decades at this point. It ensures that children that are in our care or that we're servicing have Christmas, so they provide a letter with a Santa letter saying what they wish, and then a sponsor then provides, fills that list. Because of our decrease in staffing, we're unable to do that this year, so members of the volunteer, of the community have volunteered to do it, and Outreach has volunteered to coordinate that service with our existing staff.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions for Bill?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's a good program, and I'm glad you're continuing it, you know.
It is, and we're glad that we're able to provide it this year.
Yeah. Resolution, 230285.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreement with Lighthouse Family Youth Agency to expire June 30th, 2024. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Bolzoni.
Lighthouse Family Youth Agency provides shelter services. It's located outside of Philadelphia. Like our other provider contracts, we're required to maintain contracts with anyone that we would potentially use, and so this is another placement resource in case we're unable to find a foster care placement for locally.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Bill? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution, 230286.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements with the Outreach Center for Community Resources and Chestnut Health Systems. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Once again, here is Director Brown.
So the services that Outreach will be providing, Safe Care, which is an evidence-based program that we have provided in the agency, and we had trained members of, within Outreach to also do Safe Care. They're going to be expanding that again because of our lack of staffing, of being able to deliver that in-home service of parenting instruction.
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Is staffing improving at all?
Very, very slowly. We, I think, have, we had one new person start within the last month or so. The other agency that we've contracted with, they've been able to at least keep most of their staff on board, so that's been helping us.
Good, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bill. Resolution, 230287.
This is approving the Area Agency on Aging's Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements with Friends of the Poor and the Institute for Public Policy and Economic Development. Adopted and registered by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Area Agency on Aging Director, Ms. Sarah McDowell.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sarah, good morning.
The Friends of the, the Area Agency on Aging has been able to co-host the Friends of the Poor Family-to-Family Food Basket Program and food giveaway for the last three years. The funding is used for Thanksgiving dinner baskets and drive-through food giveaways to needy families in our community. In addition, food is delivered to senior high rises throughout Lackawanna County. Approximately 1,500 to 2,000 of the meals delivered at Thanksgiving are provided to those living in low-income senior high rises. And the institute is a partner, a partnership of 13 colleges and universities and the business community. It's a nonprofit data analysis, research, and consulting organization that provides customized client solutions and strategies to facilitate decision-making and planning that enhances growth impact and sustainability. The focus of their partnership is to measure, to do a study to measure the impact of the partnership the Aging Office has with Lackawanna College to provide students with practical experience as personal care aides to senior citizens. The goal is to use this feedback to strengthen the partnership and use this data to support long-term funding requests to help support and sustain this program. The funding for this agreement was made available through a grant from the Moses Taylor Foundation.
I guess Sarah's always looking for volunteers to drop meals off.
We do. We are always looking for volunteers at Thanksgiving time to drop meals off, yes.
Start doing that in your spare time, Bill. I said, you can start doing that in your spare time. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Jeffers has definitely helped us before at Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Opportunity for the public to adjust the board.
Joan Hoda-Wan at Scranton. With regard to the flooding in the county on September 9th, have we reached the FEMA threshold for aid?
Tom? Are we close to it? Have they made a determination yet?
We're close. FEMA and FEMA met at U.N. Headquarters this week. They extended till November 9th.
Okay. Okay. It's getting close, though, isn't it, Tom?
It's getting close.
Okay, well, I certainly hope that we meet it because I would like to see aid given to those people who were affected, both homeowners and businesses.
Well, you hate to see that much devastation, but again, it'd be great if we get some federal aid from them.
Yes. With regard to the Office of Youth and Children's Services, we haven't, I haven't seen much information about staffing issues recently. How do we stand on staffing that department?
I think Bill just addressed that to a point, Joan.
I heard him mention that, you know, staffing is short.
It's slowly getting better. We brought in an outside agency, they're doing their share to make it, so it's still functional. It's a difficult thing to get people to do that.
I understand, but again, you know, our priority should be taking care of children and youth, and so we have to go an extra mile, and then let's go an extra mile.
And I think we have.
They also have to undergo training and a number of clearances, so the process does take time.
Hopefully, we'll get up to speed soon. And my only other comment has to do with the upcoming election. Commissioner Chirmack, you know, with the demise of the League of Women's Voters, and you had the debate at the University of Scranton, was that a vent by invitation only?
Was no public invited.
Shame, shame, shame. Okay.
Eight thirty at night, no public.
Hey.
I was pretty tired at that time.
Okay, but above and beyond that, there's no such thing as an unimportant election, and the surest way to keep elected officials honest and on their toes is through an informed citizenry. That's why such things are important. I hope that next year, I know it's a presidential election next year, but I hope that next year someone takes the lead on sponsoring a debate that is open to the public and well publicized. You know, we get the government we deserve, but I would have liked to have been there.
Absolutely.
And everybody vote.
For Chris's sake, it should be said, it was not at the behest of the four candidates.
No, it was nothing that we had.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
That was not a, you know, if you're interested in transparency, that's not very transparent.
The League of Women's Voters did a wonderful job sponsoring prior events, and it's a sad thing that they no longer exist.
They no longer exist, and the university is hosting it, but the reasoning, I have no clue.
Well, at any rate, let's hope that someone steps up and takes charge of doing it for next year. But again, I hope everyone goes, that's registered and eligible to vote, goes out and votes. As I said before, best way to keep elected officials honest and on their toes is an informed citizenry, and the first thing you need to do is study the various candidates and then cast a vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
PJ, do you want to say something? No?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say was that those were the rules set down by the University of Scranton, Joan. Well, they have a center for, yes, and that center has taken over the debate, and those were the rules that they laid down. County had nothing to do with it.
Go to their next meeting, Joan, and have that conversation.
They're not getting any money from me until they stop that one.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, my name's Denise, and please bear with me. I've been wanting to come to this meeting for probably two years now.
May we have your last name?
Honestly, I don't want to give you my last name.
Well, then, honestly, we.
Are the rules the name?
Okay, Schnars, I can spell it for you, S-C-H-N-A, or S.
And where do you live?
I live in Lackawanna County. I live in Scranton. My, do you want my exact address?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. The reason I'm here is I don't know if Lackawanna County is aware what's going on with regards to citizens that are residing in public subsidized housing. Lackawanna County Housing Authority is treating tenants terribly, and I have been a tenant that has resided in Lackawanna housing for 11 years, 11 years. I have.
While you, while you, can I ask you a question real quick while you're taking? Is there a particular housing unit?
Uh, yeah.
A location?
That I reside, Taylor.
Is that the one that you're referring to, or are you alleging that there's issues everywhere?
I mean, I think the problem's everywhere.
Okay.
I think it's a systematic problem with under the whole housing authority.
But your experience has been from the Taylor?
Honestly, I think it's the whole entity down.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, my personal complaints were not addressed, dismissed. Other tenants' complaints are being dismissed, and because we are, we live in public subsidized housing, I think we are dismissed because, what, we're not educated, we're poor, we're whatever. I think they don't give us the credit that we could stand up here personally. Myself, I've taken the initiative to get this far because I have been forced out, constructively evicted, legitimately evicted, where I'm fighting my eviction now to the Pennsylvania Superior Court. Okay? Because I will not let this happen and continue to let this happen. You can look my docket number up if you would like, because I have fought them and fought them, because what they're doing is wrong. What they're doing to tenants is so wrong that they are taking advantage of the fact that we're not educated and they can do this. The property managers are terrible, terrible. I'm sorry, I can't keep doing this. I. I complained and complained to people, to my senators, my congressmen, and it's like I'm talking to the wall and being ignored. Like, who do I talk to?
Denise, I don't, I don't, this is the first I've heard of this.
Have you ever gone to the housing at the court meetings and dressed up?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh. I, I went to a political meet and greet last year, right?
What?
I, last year, right before the election, I went to a political meet and greet and sat down right next to one of my politicians, tried to explain my situation. He said, oh, I got the person you to speak to, who was the chairman of the Lackawanna County Housing Board of Commissioners. Spoke with him. I got a letter from their attorney that said, pretty much, your cares and concerns don't matter. You have two eviction hearings pending, pretty much, we don't care. Have your attorney contact our attorney. I was told two years ago that my cares and concerns don't matter, our personnel are hired by the Lackawanna County Commissioners, pretty much, I mean, I don't know who hires, who fires.
That is not the case. The Commissioners appoint board members and the executive.
So, I don't know if they meant by that letter, I don't know if they meant by that letter specifically, if they meant by the Lackawanna County Authorities Board of Commissioners, okay? So, I don't know who's in charge of the Lackawanna County Housing Authority as a whole entity, but as a whole entity, what they're doing to tenants is terrible, too, it's despicable. And I'm tired of just standing, I mean, I've tried, and I've tried for two years to make people aware, to where I got evicted for it. I was told if you don't like it.
Let her talk, Brian.
It's just a time.
I was told if you don't like it, to leave. If you don't like it, if you, you know, my concerns were, go mind your own business. You know, because I raised legitimate cares and concerns about my living environment, my neighbor's living environments, I literally got evicted.
Denise, this is the first that's been brought to our attention.
I mean, I don't know who to talk to anymore.
I mean, I think.
You're in the right place.
I think you started up here pretty well.
Because it's been two years of a nightmare, personal nightmare for me, and I don't, I was afraid to come here because I seen what they did to me from the beginning. So, why would, I didn't feel safe in my home for a while. I mean, I found another place, my apartment is so despicable to live in, but I'm the problem. And my apartment's bad, you should see the other tenants' apartments. I mean, I would like the county community, the county, the newspapers to actually come and see how we're living.
I just want to say that I, I don't know, validation of your concerns will make you feel, I don't know, give you any type of solace or comfort, but I have heard complaints of this in similar nature to yours. But I'm going to talk to my co-commissioners when we're finished here, now that you've come to a meeting and addressed it.
If we could get a phone number so someone can call you back.
Don't say it over the air.
Don't say it, but you give it to the chief of staff.
I will talk to you all day long, I will tell you more.
Can you just, can you, you mentioned so, so deplorable, like deplorable living conditions, do you mean, I don't, do you mean bedbugs? Do you mean?
Mold.
Lack of inspections? Do you mean not clean when you move in a facility? Do you mean not vetting people when they move in? Tell me if you can give me some examples, please.
Oh, I can give you lots of examples. Mold.
Mold?
Mold, mold, rotting cupboards, floors that are broken and falling apart, cracks in the walls, huge cracks along the baseboard, but I'm, I'm the problem because I won't let them do the work. All I asked in an issue was, can you put me somewhere else?
Well, that's not the point. They shouldn't have to put you somewhere else, they should address the problem.
But then, the problem was I won't let them do the work. That was the problem.
Anything else? Any issue with, anything else? You have mold, rotting cabinets, and, and, did you say steps?
I know, the floor.
Sidewalk? Floors?
The floors. I mean, also, the fact that they left gutters off in the middle of winter for six months. They left siding off of units for months, and the water just pours on the, on the side of the building, but I, that's what got me evicted because I kept complaining about the fact, you got units exposed to the elements in the middle of winter, you got water pouring down the side of the units with no downspouts, where's the water going to go? And then you wonder why we have mold in our units. I'm not the only tenant that has mold.
Can you, when you leave, give your phone number, provide our chief of staff with our, the building manager for that, for that housing unit, please?
Yes.
The building manager.
It's, this is, this is the first we've heard of this.
I'm glad, because, you know, that's kind of sad in a way, because.
Yeah, it kind of is, but it's, they call, you know, it's an autonomous authority. We don't control them, we appoint board members to it. That's.
Yeah, and that's scary because I complained to the board and they got me nowhere.
Well, I, sometimes maybe the board isn't aware of it, too. Again, these are things that, we will, we certainly will, and it's controlled by HUD.
Yeah, well, I try complaining to HUD, too. I don't know how far my voice is reaching, but I, they wanted to silence me, and they got them the opposite.
I'm glad they haven't, and we will address this.
They actually got them the opposite.
And we'll get back to you, okay?
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just make sure you give our chief of staff your number. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Commissioners? Commissioners, other business, Mr. Schirmerk?
Well, just to start from where we started in the meeting, I hope everybody digs deep in their pockets and gives to the United Way this season, this November season, and to Joan's remarks, too.